Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Indian Trail Town Council meeting for Tuesday, April 24, 2018. As a reminder, if you would, please put your cellphones on silent or vibrate and take any phone calls outside. At this time, I'd like to call the meeting to order and ask everyone to please stand for a pledge of allegiance.
(inaudible) of the United States of America and to the republic which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
If you remain standing for a moment of silence, and if you would, please remember we had the passing of First Lady Barbara Bush this past week, and keep their family in your prayers. You may be seated. At this time, are there any additions or deletions to the agenda? Patrick, you did have...
Item 10A. Could delete that, please, based on council's request.
Okay.
Do we need to make a motion to strike that?
Is council okay with that? Any objections?
No objection.
Okay. Anything else, Patrick?
No.
Okay. Any other additions or deletions by council? If not, I'll need a motion to approve the amended agenda, please.
Motion to approve the agenda.
Mr. McIntyre has made the motion to approve. All in favor. Agenda approved unanimously. Brings us to presentations. 2018 Citizen of the Quarter, which first quarter was awarded to Mr. Billy Klingon. I know you're here, sir. If you'd stand up and come forward. Councilman Head, would you like to make the presentation since he was your nomination?
Sure. As we said when I nominated you, you came in with a problem. You came in with a solution, and you went out and corrected it. And for that reason, we unanimously nominate you for Citizen of the First Quarter. Thank you, and thanks to your family. Thank you very much.[188.12][188.12](applause)
Can I get the whole council up?
Sure. You all want to get on?
Sure.
On me. One, two, three. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you.
The microphone. Yeah, just make sure he speaks into the microphone.
Testing?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you very much for this award. I greatly appreciate it. It's an honor to receive this. Of course, it's all a group effort. I want to thank the town council and the mayor, and also Patrick Sadik, the town manager, who did a great job in organizing litter pickup. We've had other people involved, my wife and...
...and other people at Indian Trail. And so we want to continue with trying to make this place clean, Indian Trail clean, and pick up litter, and do what we can to educate people not to litter anymore. Thank you very much. Appreciate it.[290.12][290.12](applause)
That brings us to our second presentation, which will be given by Jesse Lindberg from Turning Point. About three weeks ago, I received a letter in the mail from Turning Point requesting to speak before council. And the floor is yours, ma'am.
My name is Bridgette Hardesty. I'm the outreach and advocacy specialist for Turning Point, which is a new role for us to try to bring more prevention into the communities. So our mission for Turning Point, if you're not familiar, is to end domestic violence, sexual abuse, and child abuse through safe shelter, advocacy prevention, and social change. So in 2015, we became a three-in-one agency. So we are a 24-hour domestic violence shelter, and then we incorporated the Treehouse Advocacy Center and the Sexual Assault Resource Center into our community as well. We are the only agencies in Union County that serve victims and survivors of domestic violence, sexual assault, and child abuse. So last year, we served at the domestic violence shelter 1,152 victims. Fifty-six were directly from Indian Trail. We did 416 crisis calls, and 26 came from the Indian Trails zip codes. For the Treehouse Advocacy Center, which serves children that have been sexually abused or severely physically assaulted, we have served 246 total victims, and 43 came from Indian Trail. For the Sexual Assault Resource Center, and those are for men and women over the age of 18, we served 109 total victims in Union County, and 11 were directly from Indian Trail. So we, again, are the only agencies that serve victims of sexual violence, domestic assault, and child abuse. So that means that we provide all of our services free to our community in Union County. So I actually go into the schools and do prevention talks on teen dating violence. I also teach stories of children, which is giving signs of child sexual abuse. And then we also have advocacy that's free. We provide counseling. If someone is not able to afford counseling, we subsidize that as well. And of course, our domestic violence shelter, we provide free meals a day, snacks for everyone that's at the shelter. Currently, the shelter is full, and has been full for the last three months. Any questions?
Where are you? Where are you located?
Oh, you can't tell that.
So I cannot disclose where the domestic violence shelter is, but the Child Advocacy Center and Sexual Assault Resource Center are on Winchester Avenue in Monroe, which is probably about a block from the courthouse.
If the council doesn't know, you also run a series of thrift shops?
We do. Thank you so much. Yes. So in Union County, we have two boutiques, one on Old Monroe Road and one in Waxaw. Then we also have a home decor store, so you can get couches and all that fun stuff there. But all the proceeds from those stores go directly back into our programs, so that they are funded.
If I remember correctly, from when I was there, you also helped them get placed back in the housing on their own and worked towards it?
That's correct. That's part of the advocacy part and the case manager part as well. So we actually, so when women come into the shelter, if they don't find a job, we actually help provide rehabilitation, and we partner with SBCC so that they can retain some job skills. And then we help them find jobs in interest for them, and that would also benefit them with childcare and things like that. So from that, then, they have to have so much in savings before that they, we can rapid rehouse them as well.
One other question.
Yes.
Which other municipalities are supporting you financially? Have you received any yet on your outreach?
For outreach, no. So I'm under a GCC grant, but it only funds pretty much just me and not materials and getting into the schools with different curriculums.
And you're here today asking the Indian Trails Council for...
Monetary funds to help establish new prevention outreach opportunities in the community to directly serve, actually, Indian Trail. So we want to get into these schools in your community, because we've already been into pretty much like Monroe High, Parkwood, the other side of the town, and we want to phase back out the work here to focus. Because of the percentage that, of calls that came in, and of the clients that have been at the shelter has been on an increase over the years.
Questions, council?
So you target more or less the high schools in terms of your outreach program, education?
Well, at this shelter, we also have a HERO program, and that is for children from 3 to 18. So it teaches children how to learn about healthy relationships and unhealthy relationships, because a lot of children and adults, they've never seen a model of a healthy relationship. So we really sit down with the children, and we have a whole curriculum that goes over what abuse is, what love should look like, what a healthy relationship should look like, and also to see the signs and work through some of the triggers of seeing abuse and being abused as well.
Has the school system been supportive of you coming in and doing that advocacy, basically, which is, you know, education to help prevent some of that that may occur?
Absolutely. So with the teen dating violence presentation, it's been very, very successful. So I have presented to Monroe High. I did 9 through 12. I presented at Union Academy. I have presented at South Providence, and we also are now piloting the HERO program at South Providence as well. And, gosh, I've done also for Monroe, the Monroe team, pregnant teens and dads. And I've done a combined domestic violence and teen dating violence parenting kind of presentation as well for them.
Any other questions?
I do. If someone wanted to donate furniture and other material, something for chairs or tables or whatever, where, how would they get with you to have that delivered?
So for the home decor store, I can give you a phone number. It's 704-288-1826. And we will come and pick up from you, and you don't have to move it anywhere. We'll move it from whatever location you have it in the house, and we'll pick it.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Counsel, she's here today asking for a monetary donation as per policy. All monetary donations that are asked for in a current meeting are to be put on the following meeting to be discussed and voted on, with as much information that the council could get between the next three weeks, I believe it is, until the next meeting, or is it two?
Two.
Two weeks. Okay.
I do want to let you know, we are in talks with Union County Public Schools currently to bring the child abuse, sexual abuse, actually, into the schools, elementary schools. So I'm not sure how long those talks will take, but we'll definitely need some funding help with that.
If you can get as much information as you can to Kathy over the next several days for the council, and leave a number where council can reach out to you and ask any questions, and they'll bring it back before the council at the next meeting.
Okay. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you. That brings us to public comments. Reminder, you have three minutes. Audience, please be respectful, as well as council, and keep your comments civil. Our first speaker is Michael Falkenberry. Your time begins when you state your name.
Michael Falkenberry, 519 Phigus Circle. I want to read the following into the record, and I quote. "Plaintiff was presented an employee performance appraisal in November 2014 that fairly praised his performance in several areas, fairly addressed legitimate and serious ongoing concerns about his performance in several areas. The performance appraisal addressed that plaintiff's work was not satisfactory in the areas of quality, judgment, knowledge, and ability to get along with coworkers, supervisors, and public communication skills, leadership ability, development of subordinates, and decision-making. The performance appraisal noted that the plaintiff had not provided the management supervision or leadership necessary to meet the city standards, and needed to gain the loyalty and cooperation of the staff by showing them respect and allowing them to speak their opinions freely without intimidation. The performance appraisal noted that plaintiff tended to raise his voice appropriately, was intimidating and controlling, and talked down to the staff. Plaintiff had referred to coworkers and management in a derogatory manner, and referred to one manager as a, I can't say the word, in the microphone, in the public record, and was directed never again to engage in such conduct. A number of concerns were the result of employee interviews conducted by the city's human resources personnel. Employees have reported concerns that plaintiff micromanaged staff, refused to listen to the views or concerns of others, and was intimidating, arrogant, bullying, and condescending. Human resources staff reported that a majority of the engineering division did not like, respect, or trust the plaintiff, and some were fearful of the plaintiff. As a result of these concerns, management determined that the plaintiff would be permitted to remain in the position of city engineer, but his job description would be modified to remove all supervisory responsibilities. Also, the plaintiff made it clear he had no intention of addressing management's concerns or accepting responsibility for his actions." End quote. But I just read into the record. It's from a court case, number CP 2014, excuse me, CP 268405 from Corray County, City of Myrtle Beach. I do understand animosity is traded in a workplace. The reason I'm reading this is because of what my wife has witnessed firsthand, so have I, and what I witnessed in a recent Stormwater Committee meeting. I understand that that was addressed last Stormwater meeting, but again, as noted, there is a history. It's documented. I didn't make this up. This is public record, if anyone wants to look at it. Thank you.
Thank you. At this time, I'll close public comments and invite Captain Cobal to the podium. Did you want to sign up for public comments?
Yeah.
Okay. I'm going to reopen public comments, if the council's okay with that, since I closed them. There's no objections?
No.
It's okay? We'll recognize Mayor Protem Kohn. You have three minutes, sir.
David Kohn.
If you need it. You need more than three minutes, you just ask the council.
Okay, I'm fine. David Kohn, 1019 Philly Drive. I think that was a, I have no idea what that was all about, other than the fact that's the first time I've heard of it. But one of the things I wanted to say is, I'm considering the source that it's coming from, and I think most people in this room consider the source that, what you just hear, even though they may be public facts. I think we're hearing one side of maybe the story, and not two sides of the story. But I think really what's important is what kind of job is our town manager doing now? And he's doing a fabulous job right now. I think he's supported by all council members. He's supported by a lot of the staff. The town is moving in the best direction that it's moved in in many, many years. The knowledge that he has with our streets and our roads, the money that he saved us, the extra time that he's putting in the office, working six, seven days a week, is unheard of. I think we're all aware up here that there were problems in Myrtle Beach, and I think we're all aware that, if I'm not mistaken, Mr. Sadik, that you sued the town of Myrtle Beach. I certainly don't want to drag Mr. Sadik all through why he sued the town, and could it very well be possible. The important thing is, is what is he doing now? And what is he doing for the town now? Is he saving the town money? Is he doing good things for the town? Are the employees happy? I'm sure there's two sides to every story, but I, me personally, consider the source of where I hear things. And when you hear the source that comes up and speaks about each and every one of us at one time or another, calling us a liar, calling us having a secret, secrets, saying we're doing this, that, and all these bad things, you know, pretty soon, it's like the boy who cried wolf, you know? People quit listening. And, you know, I'll never stop listening to the residents, but I think, I think that was, Mr. Sadik, you have my support.
10 seconds, sir.
And you have my support, because I've seen firsthand what you do, didn't know you when you worked in Myrtle Beach, but I understand there were some consequences that I'm sure works both ways. And that's just a comment that I wanted to make.
Thank you. If there's no other objection, I'm going to reclose the public comments.
Please.
Okay. Captain Cobal, sorry for the delay.
Don't be sorry for the delay. It's your meeting. I am going to be quick to brief them.
Well, then, thank you. Have a seat.
I'm going to skip. The only thing I've got tonight is to introduce these two fine gentlemen over here. One of them's a fine gentleman, the other one's just here, but...[1241.12][1241.12](laughter)
I guess we have to pick which one, Chase?
I'm going to start with Garrett Davis first. Both of these gentlemen just recently got promoted to sergeant. Both of them got moved up here to Indian Trail. And at the last meeting, I mentioned Dan Rogers was moving on and got promoted lieutenant. And Mark Thomas, that was a sergeant with us for a few years, went back to narcotics. And so we did a, we did a trade. It's kind of like going to the NFL draft, and they go down there, twenty of you. Cody and the rest of us were always going down there picking and wanting, trying to get the best ones, but I won out on this one, because these are two fine young men. Garrett Davis started working with Sheriff's Office in 2004. He's a graduate of Sun Valley High School. Spent four years in the Navy. He's been on our SRT team for eight years. He's got his Advanced Certification in Law Enforcement, awarded by the state, and married and got two girls. And the one thing I will tell you about Garrett, and I'll probably, when I say his mother-in-law was in the patch, but I don't know.[1293.12][1293.12](laughter) Y'all don't know how to get up there. You gotta see him do something around here. Tell Miss Linda, she'll snatch and whip and beat and ride.[1302.12][1302.12](laughter) Sitting beside him is Sean May. Sean started with us in 2007 with the Sheriff's Office and graduated from Peetmae High School. He also graduated from NC State University. He said, "Garrett, don't throw anything at him." I told him, "We're a big pain in the wolf's back, but just go along with that." He's been on our SRT team, Special Response Team from the Sheriff's Office, since 2011. He's also been awarded his Advanced Certification. And Sean, for any of the ladies that's curious right now, he's engaged and married, so I'll leave him that. We do still have a couple of gentlemen down there, Anthony and some more on Mason's around, so he might just look and just come over there to help us, knock on the door. Wish I could get Anthony and Mary to up to. But I am going to skip on the rest of them, but I did want to introduce these two gentlemen. I'm awfully proud to have them up here, working around and working with them for a long time now. Both of them came off of our David Squad rotation, which is run by Brian Hales. And Brian has a longstanding history of being up here and around Indian Trail, worked a lot of cases up here when he was an investigator and assigned as lieutenant over investigations. And Brian served in my position whenever I was going to Quantico years ago, so he's got a vested interest in Indian Trail as well. So these two, couldn't have had a better one to be working up under Friday coming up here. So, thank you, guys.
Thank you.[1375.37][1375.37](applause)
Gentlemen, welcome to Indian Trail.
Thank you. Thank you.
That brings us to the consent agenda. If there's no changes or questions, we'll need a motion to approve the consent agenda. Mr. Head?
I have a couple of changes. I actually read through all of them. On new business and under development, you've got 2010 through 2017. So just change it to 2017.
On the minutes? What are we talking about?
On the minutes of the council meetings. Under new business, under developments.
New business.
I will give you this.
Okay, that would be great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Is it almost done? Okay. Those are just minor typos, correct, Karen? So we can proceed pending the correction of the typo?
Absolutely, yes.
Okay. All right. If there's no other, if there's no other changes, I need a motion to approve the consent agenda pending the correction of the typo on the year. Ms. Howes made the motion to approve. All in favor? Consent agenda approved unanimously. There's no public hearings for tonight. That brings us to item 10, old business. That would be Sagecroft. Mr. Sadik?
Thank you, Michael.
I yield the floor to you, sir.
Thank you. Michael, can we get to the slide? The first time Karen and I, we approached council, there was a swap land deal with the Sagecroft developer, and a few weeks ago, they came back and they said that they could not get that commercial area that's right there on Monroe Road. So we had to change plan. If you flip to the second. So right now, what they're requesting is this area down here and an area that takes the sewer all the way to Brandon Oak. So I'm working with Karen right now to go ahead and take care of the agreement, but there will not be any land swap. There'll be sale of the property. We will sell the property, both of them, and then we will have easement to access the trail and any amenities around that pond. So I just wanted to make council aware of the change, and also, the amount of money will be shared with council soon, Karen and I, the agreement and the amount of money that's exchanged for selling the property. So it was reduced much more than it was originally, so I think we're in good shape. Karen, if you want to comment on that?
Yeah, because we're not, no longer doing a land swap, we do have to go through a different procurement process, and so we are in the process right now of getting the appropriate documents drafted for that, and we should be back to council, hopefully, by the next meeting, by May 8, with the first of what will likely be several resolutions that the board will have to pass to get this transaction completed.
Any further questions? Mr. Sadik, is that all on that issue?
Yes, sir.
Thank you, sir. That brings us to item C, the fiscal year 1819 budget. Mr. Wadowitz, Mr. Sadik, the floor is yours. Gentlemen?
Will I be able? I'm sorry?
Do you want the Excel document first?
Yes. The last time we met with council during the budget retreat, we, you've asked us, or we promised to come back and refine some numbers and show different models rather than the equal payment model. So we have two models to share with you tonight, but I'd like to go just refresh my memory, your memory, to go over some of the items. No changes in here, except the additional increase by Union County Sheriff's Office, and this is included in this expense right here. And the revenues is going to be just a small number. It didn't change much. This first graph right here shows the revenue. This is the revenue that we're going to be using in addition to this revenue right here, which is equal to the five cents that we use for the CIP and any money left from the operating budget. So whatever is shown in green, this number right here and this number down here, which is money coming from investment, power bills, stormwater revenues, stormwater reserves, available bond through street, Monroe Road, we have $500,000 that issued, but we have not used it, so we're making some money on that right now. And then also, it shows that this, will show you how this $9,500,000 will be applicable in the chart as we go down. Park bond, and then back from Monroe, what we're looking at, this is the $50,000 that we got from the economic development contract. And simply, this one is a $25 million street contract, and we do have two of them. We have park and street, and this has not been issued yet. So we're showing them as equal payments. When we issue those two, then we'll show them as an income that we'll be using to pay some bills for our expenses. What we're showing right here in red, these are six bonds that we shared with you last year with our budget. These are sort of the active bonds, except the ones that are shown in yellow. They're authorized, but they're not issued yet. So this is our, this is what we're going to be paying our revenue against. This is considered as part of the expense within the next 14 years. So just to go quickly over on purchase of the admin building, we're still paying on that. Purchase of land of Chestnut Parkway, we're still paying on that. And this is for Crooked Creek, the street bond. Monroe, Monroe Road, we haven't started paying on that one yet. Construction of Town Hall, this is our... Construction of Town Hall, this is our yearly payment from now for the next 14 years. And the reason why we're using 14 years, because the last bond, it will, it will mature in 2031, correct, Jim?
Correct.
Uh, parks, the same thing, equal payment, streets. So we had, in the last six that we shared with you last year, three of them were combined. So what we did here is we separated them and then also, uh, we added the new one that we have not issued yet. So we just keep the red number in mind to go down and show you the chart. And we went over again, uh, over all the CIP projects. And we determined sort of when we're going to build these projects as much as possible. It all depends on permitting, funding. But Sardis Roundabout, we're, we're looking into completing this in two years. This is our portion. You're looking right here, this is the entire cost of the project, but this is our portion. So last time, there was question about that. Uh, the complete street, uh, also, this is our portion, which is 1.5 million dollars. Gribble intersection, the, the North Carolina DOT is willing on putting a roundabout right there, and the cost of it is approximately 1,500,000. So they ask us, could you afford 200,000 to 300,000? And we said, yes. So with time value of money, in a couple of years, it'll be 318,000. Chestnut Parkway Phase Two, simply, this is a sidewalk, so we put it, we put it in the next, uh, two years, actually, the second and the third year. Chestnut Parkway Phase Three, this is the cost of our projects. We're planning on handing it to DOT so they could combine it with Phase Two, have the same contractor, and, uh, hopefully, we'll, we'll, we'll save some money there. The multi-use trail, uh, this is our cost. This is for both trails, the one on Independence and the one by Crooked Creek. The total, uh, project cost is 5 million dollars. So ours is 1,81, uh, and 81,000 dollars. Monroe Road, again, we'll go over this as we go to the chart, you see how we applied that. This is the 9,500,000 dollars. Now, they told us that they could give us 5 million dollars back, but they, that will be coming as a project somewhere else in the city. So, uh, we didn't put, we want to show it in here as cash coming in, because if it's going to be a project, then that 5 million will go to a project, like a CIP project. Resurfacing, we, we're proposing to keep the streets, uh, life shell for at least eight to 12 years. This is how much money we need for the next 14 years. And these four contracts, the pavement marking, markers, patching, and pouring, they come along with the resurfacing contracts. Some, sometimes they come in under budget, sometimes we don't use most of that money, but we're, we're allocating that money for the next 14 years. Signage, this is simply to, to, uh, uh, small ticket item, 3,000 dollars a year, just to make sure all the signs are retroreflective and safe for our motorists. And Old Town Hall parking, uh, I'd like, I'd like to make a comment on this one. The concert that we have last Thursday, every parking spaces that we created, there are approximately 33 along the fence by the track, they were all occupied. So, uh, we shared with council this one in the past, and this will add, a total, it'll be about 80-something parking spaces added. And we, we do have the concept, we've already done the surveying, and, uh, we're going to be coming to council asking for approval to proceed with that project. New Town Hall parking, again, we're running out of spaces sometimes with a lot of activities here at New Town Hall. And this, the area in the back right here behind the building, we could add 18 more parking spaces, and we'll be doing that in-house to save some money as we saved at Crooked Town Hall Trail, this is the connection between, uh, new building and old building, and also we'll connect all the parks together. Going down to IT Park Study, this is just a consultant study for 25,000 dollars. This is the, IT Park is the neighborhood that is located, uh, on the north side of Brandon Oak, the same side of Brandon Oak off of Monroe Road. Floodplain system, uh, we're having a contract, uh, this year of approximately 275,000 dollars to clean catch basing, sediments, uh, the floodplain. There is a possibility that we could skip a year, but it's because we manage the floodplain and we do have issues, uh, along, along the entire town, so we felt that about two, uh, quarter million dollars will be enough. First Avenue, this is the project that has the three phases. And simply, the first one is purchasing the detention pond. Second one will be taking the runoff from the pond all the way across, uh, Indian Trail Fairview, and all the way to, to the creek. And the third one will be, uh, installing most of the piping system along First Avenue. Beacon Hill Storm Drainage, we came before council for, uh, for about 200-something thousand dollars. Right now, among all the seven alternatives that we have, the first thing we're going to do is, we're going to try to clean that channel. We, we contacted the Corps of Engineer, correct, Todd? And it should be coming to the projects to, to give us the go-ahead, to go ahead, start cleaning, uh, the channel. If we clean the channel, it will resolve some of the issues, then it will give us an idea about what out of the six, seven concept could be most applicable after we clean the channel. Piece of Drive is, uh, next to First Baptist. Simply, it's a roadway that is, uh, very tight. Uh, it doesn't cost a lot of money to fix it, but we've, we've received a lot of complaints about it. Veterans Memorial, 150,000 dollars. We do have a cost estimate, uh, a, a breakdown of the cost estimate we could share with you tonight. Sun Valley Park, uh, this is, uh, this is what Jason, uh, shared with you during our budget retreat. This is our portion. What we're asking tonight, where you already done that, uh, for the consent agenda, simply allow him to submit the application and see if we get 85,000 dollars as a grant. Bridge culvert maintenance, this is simply the sediments on either side of the, the bridge culvert throughout the town. Also, we might be able to skip a year here and there, it might not be needed every year. Indian Trail Park, this is the construction of the study for that neighborhood comes back. As far as I know, Todd and staff, that neighborhood's been suffering with drainage issues for the last 15 years. So we allocated some money in there for that. Crooked Creek Phase Two, this is the, the money coming from the bond, 2,500,000 dollars. We split it, uh, in two years. And the last project is Matthews Indian Trail Chestnut Parkway Intersection. This is the intersection right here by, by Carolina Courts. When the state comes in and put Phase Two of the parkway, they're pla, they ask us if we want to contribute money for the mast arm. That's simply cost of the mast arm. We, if we decide to keep it span wire, without that, we could take that 106,000 dollars out. So we come over here and we sum up everything, and we end up with this chart. And so we made it a bit different from the chart that we shared with you last time, because the, the one that we shared with you last time was equal payment throughout the entire 14 years. Simply, if we want to go and build all the CIP projects, every one of them, we, we will need to get money for this green that you see in, under the zero line. So the purple will match the money where you see, uh, negative. Simply, we, we do have the funds to go out there and pay for these projects out of our fund balance. But after that year, it'll skip a year, and then another one right here, and this is FY 2223, this is when we, we have to pay that nine and a half million dollars. So again, with our fund balance, we could cover all these four items and don't have any negative at all. But the, the second chart that I'm going to share with you, it shows that this, if we don't go with some of the project, you could see that everything is positive. But we wanted to share with, that with you, but after that, you could see that our, our surplus is always going up as we go further to year 14. Any questions in regard to this chart before I move to the other one?
Go back up to the top. All the way up. Keep going.
More?
Yeah, very top.
Okay.
You have a nickel in there, right? For 19, uh, 19 and 20?
This one right here? No, this is simply, I inserted this one. This number, this is reflective right here, Mike, and that number. So any, any money we generate added, added that nickel for CIP, it's in this number right here, including what we save from the operating budget, correct, Jim? So it's a combination of both, but to answer your question, it is in this number right here. The only reason why I showed it right here is just to show you that this is our tax rate and that's what the, that's what we use for CIP.
Okay. You weren't suggesting a nickel tax increase?
No, sir, I was not. This is just to show council and the public that that's what we put aside for CIP project.
Thanks.
You're welcome. So again, now we'll go to Karen.
Mr. Morris?
Thank you, Patrick. Can you scroll down, or excuse me, scroll back up just a little bit?
Sure.
Um, right there, and then to the left, please. Say, uh, row number 77, 76, 78? Is there any way that we can annotate which ones, um, that will be paid for by the stormwater fees?
They're all going to be paid by the stormwater fees. We, right now, we do have, if we go up here, and right now, we have 3,400,000 dollars sitting inside reserve for, uh, stormwater projects.
Right.
So we won't pay those projects out of that reserve.
Can, but can, when you go down to row 76, how can I easily look at, uh, those rows and know that that's tied to the stormwater fee?
Because they, uh, I mean, they, oh, I see what you're saying. We could go ahead and note that by stormwater next to it, absolutely. I see what you're saying right now. Thank you, sir. I made the assumption that everybody's familiar with those projects, and that's not a good assumption.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. So I mean, we do have approximately 31 projects. That's a lot of projects. And we could put off some of them, but my recommendation in regard to pavement and stormwater, get them out of the way, because these are the troubling one. It's like you have to do them. So what I did on the next chart, I kept all the projects that require maintenance and kept all the projects that we got fun, uh, uh, state funding, because we have to use it during a certain duration. And any other projects, I took them out just to show you, if we decide to put off some of these projects, we could take some off if we don't want to borrow that, uh, money from the fund balance. But before council, at 3.4 million dollars borrowing that from, from fund balance, and we do have 28 million dollars out there, that, in, in my personal opinion, maybe because I worked with big projects, that's, that's not a significant amount of money for a big town like ours and many projects like we have. So, um, before we lose that thought, I'm going to say right here, it's like, if we go without CIP... I'm sorry. Go ahead, please, sir.
I just wanted to add something here, if I could. This is, uh, this whole analysis is based on the 18 and a half cents, so there's, we're not going to increase taxes. Um, and that's important, I know, I already worked on this schedule. Um, there was an article in the paper the other day about Monroe is increasing their taxes by three cents because they're building a new police station. But guess what, folks? We built an 11 million dollar building, and we didn't raise taxes. And that's because this guy right here, um, I know I already worked on his schedule, I know he was calling me all weekend, um, but, you know, we're giving a residence 18 and a half cents and 31 projects, and somehow, we're going to get it done, and we have a fund balance because, uh, we worked hard. Um, he watches every cent, and, uh, you know, I'm proud to be working for him.
Well, thank you, Jim. You had a lot to do with that, too.
Do you see this changing our Moody rating or any of our credit ratings?
I can't hear you, Michael.
Sorry. Do you see this changing our, our Moody ratings or credit ratings by taking any of this mo, out of the fund balance?
No.
What it does, Michael, is that Moody also looks at how much you're spending in improvement in your assets. So they give you credit for that. Yeah, they look at how much money you have in fund balance. So if you go down a lot without spending that money on fixing your assets, yeah, there might be an issue there. But in this particular case, no, I think we, we should be on the positive side.
What, what's the Moody's rating right now?
Um, we're, we're top 9% in the country, Marcus, AA1.
Okay.
Mr. Morris?
Um, at a previous meeting, we had discussed if we start drawing down, excuse me, the 15 million, I believe, at what point does it affect the Moody rating negatively or...
It's a good question, Jerry, but like as Patrick said, Moody's would see, you know, we're not spending on salaries or operating expenses. They're going to see these assets. So our assets right now, I think, are 68 million. These are going to increase, these projects are going to increase the value of the town. So they're going to work hand in hand. Um, we're way over Moody's, we have over 100%. Uh, Moody's will be happy. If we, if we took down 3, 4 million out of the 15 and showed the assets corresponding, we'll be fine.
Okay.
Good question, though.
Uh, Councilmember Morris, that, there are, I mentioned in the past, there's six equations that we could go back to and run those equations. They, they could give us more accurate response to your question. We'll be more than happy to run them again based on what we have here.
And, and the last word we heard from Moody's, Patrick, was that, uh, you know, we're in robust position, which is, um, I remember that word. So we're in good shape, we'll make sure it stays that way.
I wasn't going to ask this question, but I'm going to ask it because I think I've asked it before, I think I just forgot the answer. The stormwater money, that 3,400,000, uh, is, it's part of our fund balance?
No.
It's, it's a different fund, but it's part of the fund balance, yes, for this analysis.
And, and the reason I, I'm asking that, because it strictly has, we can't use that money for any other thing other, other than stormwater.
Correct.
So it kind of seems, in, in my mind, it, you know, why is it part of the, what is it part of the fund balance if you can't use it but for one specific thing? So you're, you're not, you know, and you, and if I'm not mistaken, you have to use it by a certain amount of time, or am I incorrect on that?
I'll, I'll defer to Todd maybe on that one, but it's fund balance, they, they didn't use a lot of stormwater the last couple of years, so this is money that has not been spent. You're correct, it has to be used for stormwater projects. But in the 31 projects, Pat matched that up to stormwater related projects, Beacon Hills, uh, First Avenue. So, um, it has to be used for stormwater projects, but it's a fund balance because it's, it's a budget money that was not used, uh, last three or four years, it kept growing and growing. Uh, we increased it last year by 25%, so we're getting more money in this year.
Gotcha. Thank you.
But it's a, uh, it's a good question, David, it has to be used for stormwater, and like Jim mentioned, we do have First Avenue, three projects there. We have Beacon Hills, we have IT Park, so that will kind of get us going, get those projects out of the way, because as far as I know, they've been out there pending for a while. All right, now, uh, on the second chart, simply, what I did is I went and taken out some projects, like I took out Sardis Road Roundabout, I zeroed that out, Indian Trail Complete Street. If, if council decide today and say, Patrick, you know, stop those projects, we don't need the funding, and keep only what we need. I kept this one because, uh, you know, the state keeping it, I should have left the money, uh, our portion here and included it in the analysis, because these two projects are funded too. But we have not started on IT Complete Street, and we have not negotiated swapping the streets, Indian Trail and Chestnut Parkway. But for the sake of the example, you could see that I took Crooked Creek out, that's 5 million dollars, so we don't have to show any local contribution just to lessen the impact of the projects. But I kept essential ones. Resurfacing, pavement marking, pavement markers, patching, crack pouring, just to keep our street system in good shape. Sinage, because also they're safety related, well, they're all safety related. And I took, uh, I kept the storm drainage because that's safety and they've been out there for a while. And the floodplain, the same thing, Beacon Hill, Piece of Drive, Veteran Memorial... And the flood plain, the same thing, Beacon Hill, Pizza Drive, Veteran Memorial. I took Some Valley Park out. That's, that's the park right there by Some Valley. And took Indian Trail Park, Cricket Creek, Phase Two, and Matthews, Chestnut Parkway intersection, kept that one. So if we go to the chart, just to lessen the impact a little bit of the CIP project, you could see, first year, you know, we're good. Second year, we're good. This is bonds kicking too, right, Jim? And then the third year is negative. But always remember that we could roll what we saved from these first two years into the third year to cover that negative. We always have to keep that in mind. Let's say we have another one somewhere down here. This positive from these three fiscal years can be used to take care of that negative. So that's the only item that we see if I, if Jim and I decide to eliminate some projects. But just, this is for the sake of showing you a different way of approaching projects. The CIP projects and the transportation projects are the big-ticket items in here. And it keeps increasing as we go further to year number fourteen. And this is like Jim said, not, not touching the tax rate. So we will be moving with this one right here if council is okay with that. But again, you know, some of these projects, you know, based on permitting or whatever, they might be delayed three months, four months, six months. And we will keep updating these numbers and share it with council. But we have to move with something for the budget because we only have one month right now, Jim, to, to get the documents ready and, and get it out of the way. Any questions in regard to number one or number two? But the operating budget did not change at all. What we shared with you last time did not change much, and we will be providing council with, with new documentation up to date. It will include probably the, the last month and a half before the end of the fiscal year. Correct, Jim?
Right.
Very good.
Good. Michael, the, the presentation, the second one? Is it, is it open? Okay. Sorry about that. Yes, it, yes. Thank you. Just, I wanted, wanted to share some item with council tonight. Jim and I, we have, we have to go back and, and try to incorporate any of these terms that you see up there. Inflation, if we can, interest rate, it changes on us, town value of money, taxes, anything subject to taxes. Now, most of the time, that's included as part of the contractor or consultant. The cash flow, we, we do use, you know, that's the difference between receipt and disbursement. We already do that. Now, we tried the single payment methodology, which is what would be the, the town value of money two years from now, three years from now? And the chart that you looked at, all that is, is included based on, on the single payment. Last time, we showed you using the uniform series, which is you have five different methodology that you could do that. And also, we have to look at the payback period, the recovery period, just to make sure that everything we're putting in that budget, considering any of these, these terms and these methodologies, depreciation on equipments, on computers, anything like that. And then keep going, you know, we, we have many bonds, you know, these bonds mature. We look at devaluation, we look at fair market values for our properties, the vehicles. And also, if we want to, if we want to go to the bank and borrow some money or if we invest some money, we look for that minimum attraction rate of return. And definitely, you know, the economic equivalence. And simply what it is, is, is two cash flows. We look at them, and we choose the best that gives us the, the best minimum attractive return. And also, the cost of capital and the benefit-cost ratio. What is the benefit? And most of our project is not monetary benefits, sort of, it's late safety benefits, other benefits that benefit the, the town. But we, we could come up with a benefit-cost ratio for that. And then if we ever needed to do an economic feasibility study, we'll do that, too. And we look at capitalized equivalents, and we look, we choose among investment alternatives. Now, if council says would like to, would like us to look at two projects or three projects and select one or two out of those projects, we could do that, too. We, we run a small analysis and come back to council and say, we, we decided based on, you know, these results. But please keep in mind that construction indexes are out there, you know, they go up and down. That impact our projects and everything we do. The same thing for building cost material and material cost. Not including the fuel. As we talked last time, Adam, I think that, that increase in solid waste, 1.6, was due to probably fuel-related, right? If I'm not mistaken. But we always keep up with, I keep looking at, Jim and I, we keep looking at these indexes just to make sure we won't get hit with something very bad. Now, I wanted to do this list just to get council on board that we might run into emergencies, uncertainties if we're digging a street or anything like that that could cause risk and cause change orders and cause the project to be over budget. So emergencies and uncertainties are always out there. That's the risk that everybody takes. Interest rate right now, most of the, the money that we make, Jim, it goes from one to two percent, correct? But most of the time, we borrow money on bonds, it goes from one and a half to, to two and a half. So we're in that range. I did include solid waste in the town employees. Most of the employees, they average about five percent increase every year. So we look at that one, too. Health insurance this year, it went up a little bit. But we worked things around by canceling a small program and taking the money and, and put it under health insurance, so it won't impact our premium. Inflation, most of the time, is a good number to use, two percent. And we'll be working with Adam on equipment replacement, when to retire these equipments. The last three items that I wanted to show is since we're not an enterprise and we do not have water and sewer and also fire right now. Anytime, like Jim mentioned, Monroe did increase their taxes by three percent. So if the county decide to increase their taxes down the road based on, let's say, these three examples, water, sewer, and fire, somewhere down the line, that is going to come at us, and then we have to react to it. So I'm not advocating that we need to raise taxes. I'm just saying that any of these thing could happen, and we have to react to it. Any questions?
Good job.
Well, thank you, David. Thank you very much. Thank you, Jim.
Question. Do you want us to pick one or the other?
No, sir, I think. It's a good question. No, I, I think if you're okay, we'd like to move forward with the first model. And definitely, as we start saving some money, over the future years, we'll take it. It's going to go back to fund balance anyway. But if we run into any change or anything like that before we finalize the document, definitely we'll come back before council and, and let you know. But we are in good shape right now. Thank you, Michael.
Is that all on that one, Patrick?
Yes, sir.
Okay, that brings us to the Veterans Memorial Cost Estimate. Patrick, that's, the floor is still under your control?
Yes, well, what I did is, and I'm going to turn it to Adam. What I did is I, Adam and I, we sat down, and I went over the 3D model. He took all the dimensions, he did all the hard work, and he got all the cost estimates. So we do, we have it, Michael, somewhere in the presentation. It's not up here? Okay, simply, we did have a detailed cost estimate, and right now, we are, I mean, we, we did some value engineering, we are about a hundred and forty-one thousand?
Forty-three.
Hundred and forty-three. I think we did include it in council's packet when we send the agenda, right? So we trying very, very hard to keep it under a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. And we could do that. And I think donation is rolling, so we're seeing more donations. And I'd like to say thank you to all council members that assist in doing that. It's not in there, Mike?
Uh, no, I could, I could pull up the council packet online if you want to.
Yes, it's a hundred and forty-three thousand, five hundred and eighty dollars. Thank you, Michael. Any questions from council?
Any questions?
I've got it here.
Yeah, that's the same graph that we were, spreadsheet that we were going to share with council tonight.
So as, as donations start to come in, are you guys going to keep a, a running total and let us know?
Yes, sir. We, today, Jim and his staff, they created a spreadsheet, and it's also shared with the manager's office. And we will keep updating council where we are. Every milestone, we'll share that budget with you.
Is that all on, Mr. Morris?
Yeah. You know, I'd sent an email to council, and I didn't know if you guys had had a chance to, to review that or had any thoughts, you know, regarding some of the comments made.
In reference to using the town events to help with donations?
Mm-hmm.
I think it's a great idea.
Yeah, I, I think, I think it'd be a great idea, Councilmember Morris, if we have sort of like a tent or something. And definitely, if, if VFW could help us with that. So that way, it will not impact the two, three part-time employees that serve in the public during the event. And then if VFW, they have a strong presence, and, and I think they could do a better job. And then what we'll do is we, we will have all kind of information right there on the table. We'll provide them with the information. I think it's an excellent idea. Definitely, we could have sort of a booth or something in every event if council decide want to move that, in that direction.
Do you have an update as well with the...
I really, I really don't have an update, but I'll try to give you one anyway. A, as far as what you're talking about, Jerry, I think my suggestion, too, would be, and you, you may want to do this. I don't know if somebody on council wants to head that, that, that part of it up at the events that might be the, I wouldn't call it a committee, but a, a member that's going out there. And the reason I say that is, uh, town staff, I mean, they're already out there working the events, and they're already kind of working the overtime. So I, I think we, we need to find who, who's going to work them. I hate to ask the town staff to work those, those events and get behind it. So I think, I think you'd do a great job out there. Matter of fact, I think, but I don't know how much time you got.
Thanks, Coach.
I, I think you would do a fantastic job, you know, heading that up with, with Cheryl, and might as well throw her out there, too. She, she's a great help, but whatever. And, and we'd help you, we'd all help you. I'd enjoy helping you, too, you know, all of us help at the town events. But the first thing I think we need to do, and which we haven't done yet, and I think we need to do, hopefully, within the next couple of days, is finalize what, what we're going to do with plaques and, and actually who, what, where, and when the plaques are we, are going to be used there. And I think we need to get with the VFW and talk with the VFW to find out exactly what they want as far as that goes, so we know what we're selling. But we need, like you said, we need to get on that as quickly as possible. And then the, the golf tournament on June the thirtieth, which I think we already have, is, could be, Todd told me twelve, maybe twelve employees here that may be playing and looking for more. And we need all the help we can get from everybody out here. We, and I know you're, you're going to help. I know, I know all, I know, we're all going to help at, at doing this. And we're going to have, like I said, we're going to have lunch, and we're in the process of getting a flyer made. But hopefully, in the next week or so, we'll be done, I hope, with all of the, all what we, we need to do and how we're going to do it. Because we're actually running out of time, you know. June the thirtieth, sounds like it's a long time away, but it's not, you know. It's going to be made next week, so, yeah, sir.
I've been able to gather almost a dozen gift cards for raffles from different...
I'm sorry.
About, been able to gather about a dozen gift cards for raffles from local businesses for the golf tournament, as well as passed on a few business names that will be willing to sponsor a plaque. And some of the businesses have goodies to put in the bags for the...
That's even better.
Golf players, so I'll get with you. When you have time, just call me, we'll sit down and go over...
Yeah, well, I called you yesterday, but your, your voicemail box is full, so I couldn't leave a message. But anyway, to make a long story short, that's all good ideas. And we need to, to, you know, call on the businesses of the town to donate for sponsorship, for holes and, and all that stuff, so. It's, I, I can't wait. It's going to be a good time for everybody, for all. We'll have all, hope you all come. You know, you don't have to play golf to come either. We, we'll have fun, we'll have lunch, we'll have a ten-dollar lunch. But just come out and hang out, big clubhouse. We'll have a good time, won't we, Shirley?
Yes, we will. Been down that road before.
Yep, we've done it before.
Mr. Sedik, one more thing?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. If, if Mike and I are able to set a date also for our business forum, where we're, we're planning on inviting, you know, business leaders in the community, engineers, bankers, developers, anybody's out there, business owners, for that day, also, we're going to try to ask, you know, share the information so we could get more donations in that event. But we're not going to do that right now because David is working on his tournament. We don't want to take any donation away from him. I'm just kidding, David. But that's another way of, of trying to get donations, too. I think we're going to do it here in, in Town Hall.
Thank you. Okay, there's no further questions, we'll move on to the next item. That'd be eleven new business, item A, Old Town Hall Parking.
Parking lot. Yes, sir. Michael, if you could point at the, at the three, the thirty-three parking spaces that we have right there by the rail. I think there was a total of thirty-three, if I'm not mistaken. But all these thirty-three were occupied during Thursday, every one of them. And Union County Sheriff's Office done an excellent job directing them to the back, turn around and, and park facing Indian Trail. So it worked out pretty good. Now, the one, not including Michael behind the building, if you could point from, yeah, the front and all the way down, this, and, and then on the side up here on, on Blythe, all the way, there you go. That's what we're planning on adding with this project that was included in the budget. So we, we, we put about two hundred thousand dollars. But definitely, since Chase right now is working on the building, I think if we move forward, we've done the surveying. If we move forward with construction, by the time he's done, we're done, the parking and the building both be done at the same time. So if council is okay, we, we're asking, asking council's approval to move forward with that project.
Council will need a motion? Or consensus, which, whichever?
You talking about for the parking?
Yeah, you wanted to...
How many parking lots?
Thirty-three.
Thirty-three, we already got them, but I think, Adam, what, eighty, the rest? About eighty more parking spaces to be added to the existing ones. And again, as I mentioned in the past, if you want to go take a virgin piece of land right now and put parking lots on it, the cost of each parking space is about fifteen thousand dollars. That's how much it costs you in a brand-new parking lot.
This could average as twenty-five hundred.
Yes. And what, I think this project right here will complement Crossing Path Park because I've witnessed, me and staff, we witnessed a lot of people park next, on Indian Trail next to the shopping center, have the strollers walk all the way to here. Well, the evidence this past Thursday showed that if they had the parking spaces close to the concert place, they did park there. So we feel that the entire parking lot would be full. So we feel that the entire parking lot would be full when we have events there and also a connection with the trail to our new Town Hall.
Council?
Well, seeing as I was one of those folks and my wife that ended up parking at Johnny Kay's and walking, I'd, I'd like to make a motion that, um, that we go ahead and proceed with the 200,000.
And Mr. Morse made the motion to proceed with the parking. All in favor? That would be unanimous. Patrick?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, that brings us to the patching contract. Mr. Sedik?
All right. This is the FY seventeen eighteen, so we, this is, this belonged to this year's budget. We will have one next year. So the weather is good right now, it's dry, and I think it's time to go out there and do it. Todd and his staff selected the locations, you're going to see pictures of those locations, but most of them ended up being at cul-de-sac. Now, the reason why we contracting this out is because it's, it's, it's more efficient for a contractor to do it rather than using town resources. We don't have the equipment and they could go out there and, and complete it in a timely manner. Michael, if you could scroll down, please. This, uh, and I'm pretty sure council, Mr. Mayor, all of you are aware of many of the cul-de-sacs that we have out there. If you look at the alligator cracking and the patching that you see, uh, this is the time when to repair that pavement. Otherwise, if it gets worse than that, you have to reconstruct, meaning take the entire base and take the entire pavement out. Now, we don't just make our decision based on visual. Todd and his group went out there also and took cores, and the cores tell us the thickness of the pavement and how much base it has under it and also sometimes about the condition, condition of the soil. If you could scroll down, Michael, please. Some of them to the point that you have these big potholes that if we go patch it, it's, it's, it's not going to get better, the rest of the area is going to get worse. And it has a lot to do probably, Adam, with solid waste trucks in the past and the current trips that they have right now. This is another one too. I know, Mr. Mayor, I've contacted us for, on numerous occasions for stuff like that. And this, this is a very bad one. We just can't keep them like that. We have to attend to them, otherwise we're going to have to reconstruct the entire cul-de-sac and, and the leg that is, is attached to it. So what we're asking today now, Todd, this was budgeted for in last year's budget, Jim, right? So the money is there. All what we're asking council is to give us approval to move forward with, with this project.
If there's no questions, council?
Making a motion to approve.
Mr. Heads made a motion to approve, all in favor? That would be unanimous. Thank you, Patrick.
Thank you, sir.
Next is item C to PIR policy budget. I guess that's up to Karen.
I'm, I'm going to go ahead and turn it to Karen.
I'm looking for the new section here. I don't believe this has the new, this, the one in the packet has the new section. If you give me two seconds, I'll pull it up. Sorry about that. As we, last meeting, if you remember, I had made a recommendation or suggested that the town establish a budget for public information requests and make that part of the town policy. The purpose for that is twofold. First, it provides the council and staff a guideline each year to sort of monitor how much money's actually being spent on the public information process. And second, it would shine a light on the abuse or non-abuse of the system and give council a, a, a working knowledge of what's actually happening inside the operations and what it's costing the town to respond to some of what some people consider egregious requests and what can be definitely be egregious requests. Um, I'm, I'm going to apologize that this new language isn't in here, but I will definitely shoot it to all of you for review, but I'm going to read it into the record. What I'm recommending we add is a section five to the policy that is in the packet. The town of Indian Trail seeks to monitor, manage, and to the extent allowed by law, balance the interests of controlling town expenses against the rights of those seeking public information from the town. Accordingly, the town council of Indian Trail hereby requires that each year during the town's budget process, the town manager shall establish and recommend to council a, in quotes, "public information request budget," forecasting the expected annual expense to be incurred by the town arising from public information requests for council's approval. Should the town exceed the annual budget during any fiscal year, the town manager and director of finance shall proceed to request a budget amendment as required by law. The town seeks to encourage the adoption of creative, cost-effective methods of complying with public information requests, the aggressive use of technology where available and appropriate, and the publication of town information in such a manner as to make it easily accessible to the public. So what, what I believe that section does is, A, set out a rule that the town staff and management has to provide a budget for public information requests, and second, gives the policy reasons behind that. I think that's very supportable. I think this would be enforceable in North Carolina should anybody challenge the, the validity of that request. And of course, any, the, in the course of a year, the, the, the council may be faced with running out of a budget number and being asked for a budget amendment. And I don't have an answer for you how that would be, how to deal with that until we are actually in that moment, and we will cross that bridge when we get there if that's okay with council at this point. But I really believe this is probably a great balance between the concerns that y'all have expressed for a year and the obligations the town has to provide information to those requesting it from the public.
Quick, sorry, quick question.
Yes, sir.
Would, um, would it be lawful to also publish the request and the persons asking for them, the cost associated with that as well?
Certainly.
Because I think as their right to know what's being discussed within the town or whatever information they're seeking, I also think it's the public's right to know who's really seeking the information and what's the purpose behind it.
That, there would be, there would be no, there would be no prohibition against publishing the cost and the name of the person requesting. The town does not have a right to ask why.
No, no.
Okay.
We don't want to know why, but we can publish what they're asking for and the cost, yes.
Perfect, certainly, certainly the cost, and that's right, yes.
And who, yep.
Okay.
Council member McIntyre, as I mentioned in past meetings, I will continue listing the name of the requester and the cost and the manager's report every time somebody request, uh, ma- make a PIR request, and then we could do that, correct Karen?
Yes, yes, Karen.
We will continue doing that, and we will monitor the budget and we'll come back to council if council is okay by, by approving the PIR policy. So, uh, we will continue doing our job and we'll monitor the, the budget, but the name and the cost will be listed and that report i- is on the website. We, we posted it every time we publish it, right, Michael?
Okay, you need a motion for this?
Yes, if y'all, if you all are comfortable with this new policy, then we would need a motion to adopt this, um, public records request policy.
Just one other quick question, Patrick. Aren't we putting this, um, also the, aren't we putting it on the agenda or, or in the consent agenda for?
Manager's update.
The, uh, not the manager's update, but the, the, who's using the, the PIR request, who's making the PIR request? So that, will that be in the consent agenda or will that be no?
No, no. So far, the only place where we showed it is the manager's report, correct, Michael?
Right, okay.
There's no further questions? We need a motion, please?
I want to make a motion to approve the, um, PIR policy, I stayed, I was reading to record by Karen.
Mr. McIntyre has made a motion to adopt a new policy for PIR requests in the line item budget. All in favor? That would be unanimous. Town, that brings us to Town Hall rental agreement, event rules, and ordinance. Mr. Sedik?
I wanted to mention these two items. Karen and, and staff has been, working together. Karen has developed the agreement and the rules and the ordinance, and it's out there right now. What we'd like to do is go ahead and provide you with a copy, maybe tomorrow, and give you a chance for approximately, I'll give you approximately a week to review it and get back with us, and if you're okay with it, we present it back before you for approval. So item 11D and 11E, recently developed and updated, and we will share them with council for review and as soon as you approve them, as soon as you review them, give us some comments, we'll come back for approval. Anything you want to add, Karen?
I just, I thought maybe it would be helpful to go through a little bit of the, the, the ordinance on the, um, the Town Hall facility. I think, as you all know, the, the town's had several requests for use of the facility and, and we wanted to make sure that we had a good, strong set of rules surrounding the use of the building. I've, we've drafted an ordinance that includes everything from the council's, um, giving management the authority to set the rules and then within the guidelines established in the ordinance. It also includes the rules of conduct inside the building, things like no loitering, no weapons control, alcohol control, um, no disturbances, that, those, those types of things. And so we should have a good set of rules for how people conduct themselves in the building as well as how they, how they use the building. And it will be in your packet and for your review.
Mr. Morse?
When I was reviewing that, I had some questions if this applied to outside the building as well.
It does. I believe if you see at the begin, at the top, um, it should say, I think, I'm sorry if I'm scrolling through too quickly. Authority, concerned the operation of town facilities and, and within, within the ordinance itself, it does say in the grounds surrounding the facility. For example, if you look at, um, 32.14, proposed 32.14, it says, "It shall be unlawful for any person to loiter within Town Hall or on the grounds adjacent thereto." So that's where we're getting the outside of the building restrictions as well.
Any other questions?
Well, part of, part of why I was asking this, you know, historically, we are a nation of protesters. When things aren't going well, we gather around Town Hall and we let public officials like ourselves, you know, what's on the people's mind. Are there going to be any restrictions to that? Let's just say that folks in Indian Trail are really mad at what we're doing up here. I don't expect that, but it, it could happen. So they show up here at, at Town Hall, is this, um, is this a problem?
We, all of these rules would be limited by the freedom of speech. And so I, most of these were, were pulled from existing ordinance on federal buildings. They, um, within these rules, there is an inherent First Amendment right that would supersede based on, and the law on this topic is extensive based on, depending on what is happening. For example, a protester, it is, it's legal to have a rule that prohibits somebody from blocking the door, um, the blocking, the entry and the ingress and egress to the building. There are, a reasonable distance from the building is, is a legal protest. And so anything, and when a protester comes, they, the restriction would be limited to what is legally allowed by the, by constitutional law and First Amendment. So we would certainly abide by those rules.
Good, all right, thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions? Do we need to vote on this tonight?
No, this is just for FYI and we'll bring it.
Item 11 and, or?
11D and E.
That's right. And again, we'd like, we're, we're asking that you review these and the perfect concern that Councilman Morse just, just, just talked about right there, that's exactly what we're looking for. And if there's any, any items that are not included or that are included, we'd love to have council input on things you think might be important. So, and then, but we should be ready to, we would ask that y'all vote on this probably at the May eighth meeting.
Thank you. That brings us to item 12, discussion items. A, boarding committee appointments. There were some applications for vacant seats. Mr. Sedik, do you want to take the lead on this?
Yes, sir. I would like to say that we do have a vacancy on the, it's an alternate vacancy on the planning committee. We do have one, uh, seat number seven. This is vacant on stormwater. And we also do have seat number four, which is vacant on transportation. So we do have three seats that they're available out there to be filled. Vacant, I'm sorry.
Okay, there was, uh, planning, Mr. Kung?
Do we, I, I see one of the applicants, Ms. Mimi back there. Did, did we, did we want to do anything with her tonight or did, I mean, or is it possible? I know it's not on the agenda, so if it's not on the agenda, are we, should, should we just?
Well, it was on your.
I think there was a confusion with you, wasn't there? Didn't you think there was going to be a, a vote on that tonight?
Yeah.
Yeah, who, I'm just curious, I'm not supposed to be talking like this, but who asked you?
I did.
Oh, did you?
I was, I thought Town Manager asked me to make sure the applicants were present tonight.
Yeah, no, no problem. This, this miscommunication, that's okay. But I, I didn't know since, if, can we amend the?
The item's on the agenda.
Yeah, can we, can we just amend the agenda and, 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 and I want, uh, Ms. Howell to nominate her because I think Ms. Howell.
I, I think, um, what the mayor was saying is that the item is on the agenda, so we can proceed.
Absolutely.
Yeah, you can just proceed if you wish to take from the applications and appoint.
Okay.
This for the planning board.
This is for the planning board, correct? Well, also, are we, are?
Go ahead, Ms. Sedik.
Um, are we going to go ahead and make recommendations for the seats that are expiring here in, in June?
If there's applications that you're prepared to make nominations for, if not, we can do it on the next meeting. That's well within your rights.
Mike, do we have any applications for the expiring terms? Do we have any right now?
Well, um, for example, the planning board, typically what happens is, um, you know, if we, um, we have altern, that can move up to re, to, to replace anybody going forward.
If I, Mike.
So we need to, we need to make sure that we, and, and he's got the list, I think, here of.
If you're prepared for that and if someone wants to make the motion, you can appoint somebody to the alternate and ask that alternate if they were interested in that expiring seat, at which time they can move into that seat if that council so chooses.
Kathy, there is a vacant position on the planning that will be, there is a position that will be vacant at the end of June, correct?
Uh, yes, June 30.
Yes, there are, um.
Counting the one we're at tonight, makes three, right? Is that whatever?
We've got seats one, four, and five.
Gotcha.
Expiring in, uh, June.
Yes, that's correct. Four and five in June and also seat one.
Right.
That's all the planning.
No, not, not according to this.
For planning. The way I understand it, we have a vacant seat right now for the alternate?
I, I have.
What happened, Marcus was on the, was on the planning board, Marcus came to council, so there's a, there's a.
Yeah, but when I look at the, Patrick, when I look at the table you supplied, um, when I see term expiration for planning, I see 21, 20?
That is incorrect.
Okay.
It should have been, it should have been 18.
2018 rolls up to 21, so the table reads those would be the new term expiration dates.
New terms.
So the table that I gave you identifies that, um, you know, what's, what's expiring and also what's vacant. So if you look down the column, this, it says expiring, 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 the new term date would be 2021.
Okay, so the ones that are 21 are the ones that will be expiring essentially, then that's how I should read this.
That's the new term date, yeah, they expired June 18th of this year.
All right.
And they're three-year terms.
Yep.
Ms. Howell, did you want?
Well, I, I just, my way of thinking was Ms. Mimi was here tonight and she was, through miscommunication or whatever, was expecting to. through miscommunication or whatever, was expecting to be, or be nominated or brought up for the planning board.
That's fine.
And I'm just thinking, since she's here-
Can I make a recommendation to the council?
Yeah.
I, Ms. Mimi's been active in the community for several years. I would like to see the council appoint her to the, a vac, currently vacant alternate, and ask her if she'd be willing to move into one of the expiring terms immediately upon its expiration, and nominate her for both seats.
I, I agree. I think that's what I was trying to do.
You want to write the law for him? Typically, don't we have alternates that move up?
Yes. We could.
And we're filling an alternate seat tonight.
We can.
Yeah. But there's going to be more than one seat expiring.
There's three seats expiring.
Michael, don't you have to reapply?
Yeah.
Well, in the way it was done by the council a year or so ago, a year and a half, that first preference would be given to the alternate.
One second, Ross. No, thank you.
Go ahead, the alternate.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Sedik. I think just one, one area consideration may be that if we do have some, some seats that are approaching their expiration date, we may want to give the, those members an opportunity to see if they'd like to be reconsidered for, for reappointment. And so, I think I would just like to give those members an opportunity to participate in that process, and just have that for council consideration.
There's nothing saying you can't appoint her tonight as an alternate, and if she chooses to apply for the expiring seat.
Yeah, I'm, I'm lost here.
Go ahead, Mr. Morse.
Is it not, is it Marcus, is it not Marcus's seat that we're, that we're-
That's correct.
Marcus has stepped down and, and-
It's a vacant position that we can fill tonight.
Yes.
And I understand what you're saying. You're, you're saying, you'd like, and I think Mike's maybe saying the same thing, where you want to fill it maybe with an alternate position.
Only thing I was responding to is there was some mention about nominating a member to replace Mr. McIntyre's former seat, which is an alternate seat, it's vacant, ready to be filled. And then, appointing them for one of the expiring seats that's going to expire in a month or two. And my point is only that, let's, I would suggest that we give the, the current member's seat that's about to expire an opportunity to reapply. Council may make their own decision, but at least we should give them that opportunity.
I understand, I, I understand.
Can we make a suggestion that, on the next meeting? Mr. Sedik, is it possible to contact those before the next meeting of the expiring seats and ask them if they wish to reapply? And then, we can fill those in the first meeting in May?
Absolutely, but I have a suggestion.
Okay, go ahead.
Right now, we do have a vacant seat for an alternate. This seat can be filled today, and that member can be on the list with other ones that exist on the board right now for reevaluation and appointment at the end of the term. So, we could go ahead and take-
Sir?
Yes.
Ms. Gibbs did say she would be here tonight. She said she would be running late because of the travel time from where she was. I don't know if she's here tonight, but I just wanted to make council aware that Ms. Gibbs was also coming.
All right, I mean- Mr. Morse, did you have something real quick?
Yes.
Go ahead.
I would like to just go ahead and nominate Cheryl Mimi to fill this seat, if she's willing to do it. She has been involved for-
She has an application in, sir.
As, as long as I can remember, I believe she was on the planning board previously.
Yes.
So, I believe she'd be the perfect person for it.
Mr. Morse, if there's no further discussion, Mr. Morse has made the motion to appoint Cheryl Mimi to the currently vacant alternate seat on the planning board. All in favor? That would be unanimous.
Can we have Cheryl come up for a second?
Come on up, Cheryl. We know how shy you are.
I'm sorry for the confusion.
Any questions, Mark?
No, I think we've, we've pretty much well said we're, and we are honored to have you. Glad you're, glad you're going to serve, and appreciate your volunteering.
Welcome back.
Absolutely.
Welcome back, again.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Was there anybody else that wished to be nominated and appointed tonight for any of the other vacancies that were applied for?
No, he's, he's already on there.
He's already on. But I do have a question.
Yes, sir.
We've done that. So, we've, we've, we spoke about folks that are presently serving on the committees. What if, and this is a big what if, what if we think that there's a person that's not pulling their weight on a committee? Is, when is the appropriate time to, to not invite them back to be on the committee?
And do it the most tactful way?
Yes.
When people reapply for the seats, you don't appoint them, you nominate somebody else that applied.
So, where that, where I'm headed with that, let's just, we have, what, maybe 20 people that are going to be reapplying for seats? I haven't looked through the list. And perhaps there's a couple of persons that one or more of the council feels wouldn't be a good choice. We don't necessarily want to invite them back, but-
You can't stop them from applying. It's their right as a citizen to apply, you just don't have to vote for them.
You don't want them to apply, right?
You might want to make them an offer they can't refuse.
And, and also, can, can we get an update on attendance to the different committees and boards?
Yeah, for each of the applicants that's reapplying, that's a good idea.
Well, Mr. Morse, what I was going to say is, we experienced something like that on the stormwater committee recently. If you miss three attendance, you're out.
We just had to let somebody go.
And that, that decision is made by the chair of that committee and the board member. So, we're monitoring attendance, so anytime somebody gets to three, immediately they're out.
Three consecutive, or thirty?
Actually, I don't think it's three consec, I think it's three consecutive, that's correct.
Or 30% in a 12-month period.
And is there a procedure in place to notify them, say, hey, this is your second strike, one more, and you may be out?
That's within the bylaws of each committee, is where it talks about what their rules and responsibilities are as a committee member, and then it talks about that attendance policy.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Is there any other appointments tonight, or we want to just put together the information, invite people to reapply, and pick a date in May to put it on the agenda? Patrick, it looks like we're done with that for now. Thank you.
Thank you.
Brings us to the manager's report. Patrick, your turn.
All right. I would like to start with this item on the report, which is, which is loitering. I come on the, I come to work on the weekend because I really enjoy it. It's, it's quiet, it's one of the best places I've ever worked, it's a good environment, and I really enjoy it. But for the last two to three months, the same individuals, they come in in their car, drive around the building, they stop in front of the building, different time, in the morning, at lunch, at nighttime, and I'm not sure if they know that we do have cameras that document their presence here on site. And again, I've, I've mentioned incidents like that in the past, and council asks me, who is this person that, that requesting all the PIRs? And I'm going to say this time that it's the same individual, Mr. Fockenberger and his wife, that they are always here, at nighttime, daytime, in the morning, and it's sometimes, I watch out for part-time employees. I haven't called Captain Chase yet, but I will do that, and I will continue to look after the safety of my staff and myself. So, I'm glad Karen included this item and, and the rules and regulations in the town ordinances. But again, it's the same individuals all the time, and it's, it's really getting, getting old, and I just wanted to make council and the public aware of that today.
Anything else, Patrick?
No, sir. And in regard to the manager's report, Mr. Mayor and council, we've been spending all the time trying to get the budget ready for, before the end of the fiscal year, and there is one item that really I have not gotten a chance to wrap up, even though staff already taking care of their parts, which is the manager's report. So, starting tomorrow, I'll try to put the manager's report for the last, last six weeks, six to seven weeks, and probably forward, forward a copy to council, and we'll put one on the website as soon as possible. Other than that, any questions that council have in regard to any projects, any items out there, I'll be more than happy to respond.
The floor is yours.
I'm going to ask the council tonight to show their appreciation and support of our town manager. I think he's been through a lot. We all like him, we're getting everything done, it's unbelievable. He's fair to most people. I'm sure there's one or two out there that wouldn't feel you 100%, but that's okay. The information that was read here a little bit ago was put on the website by, I believe, the same person. And it's, it's really getting old, because, you know, like David said, we're succeeding, we're moving on, and they're going to go after us. And that's exactly what's happened. So, I know this is a little out of order, but I would really appreciate the fellow council members to-
You can handle that any way you want. A vote of confidence, a hip, hip hooray, a six-week, six-week paid vacation in Tahiti.
Patrick, I'd try, but I don't think I'd get away with it. But if we could show hands for a support, a support-
Okay. Ms. Howell's asked, made a motion for a vote of support and confidence for the town manager, all in favor.
I hope that passes the word.
I'll even add to that, even though I don't get a vote. So, that's 100% unanimous, Patrick.
Mrs. Howell, I do, I do thank you, and thank council. And again, if it wasn't for your support, neither the staff nor myself could accomplish what we accomplished so far. And we're not going to let anything stop us from moving forward.
Moving forward, absolutely. Thank you.
Thank you.
Now, that brings us to council comments.
Where's your speech? Talked enough tonight. Good timing. You know, I've only dealt with one town manager in my short term as a council person, but, so I have no one to compare him to as far as working directly with. But we have had previous town managers that have been less than available to the citizens and possibly the staff. But I want to reiterate my support for you, Patrick. Again, so many times I've come up here and leaned on you for advice and direction, and you haven't instructed me how to do things, you have, you know, kind of pointed me in the direction and then turned me loose to make my bad choices or good choices as I'm processing the information. But, but I think we're very lucky. You've got a lot of knowledge, you've really helped me out with CARPO and some of the trans, understanding some of the transportation needs and functions in our community. And I think it's very unfair to constantly bring up past, bring up the past when it's not relevant to the present. So, and we all, I'm sure, if we all look behind us, we can see something that we wish that we'd have done better, or somebody wouldn't have noticed. But being in the public eye, we're targets. But I do want to say that to you, I think you're one hell of a town manager, and I appreciate you working for the town the way you do, and I feel we're very fortunate to have you. And everyone that attended tonight, thank you so much. It's, it's great that y'all take time out of your day. I know you're tired and ready to go home, have supper, but coming here, keeping us accountable, and, and sharing your concerns with us is greatly appreciated, and I hope you all have a great night.
Well, I'm happy to see the vote was unanimous. And it, you know, we can go on about Patrick, but he's very patient and understanding, and he gives you an explanation. You just feel good when you leave here, at least I do. He's never been short with me, but will explain something if we have a little discussion about it. I hope the employees appreciate you too, because we've been through some battles here in the last several years, and things are settled down now, and we are moving forward, and a lot of people are upset because we are one unit here right now, and we're all trying to help each other, and we respect each other. And this continues negative stuff, and, and I think everybody has a right to public comment. Lord knows, I fought for it 15 years ago. But there comes a time when enough's enough. I mean, I, I just, I just can't see why this goes on every time, every week. But anyway, we're glad to have you, Patrick, and the staff. There's some good guys sitting over there, there really are. They've been around for a while. Thank you for coming this evening, and I'm just happy to be on this council, I truly am. There's some nice men on this, and they are, I'm the only female, of course, but, I'll shut up now. I'm getting like David here.
Mr. Kung?
Actually, I wasn't going to say much tonight, but, but I, but I think I will. I just, as, as we know, and when I, and I'm going to say we know, and when I say we, I see almost a lot of the same familiar faces in the crowd, and, and much appreciated, the faces that I see here. But we kind of know what's going on in town because we come to the meetings. And it's, it's very disheartening when, when we know really what, what good is trying to get done, and you look at these, these two or three people in town who come up and try to create habit, and if, you know, and I don't even want to mention their websites, but when you look at their website, there's absolutely zero comments on them. There's, there's, nobody's making the comment. But these are a few of the things that have happened just recently. The council's having illegal meetings, okay? The, and meaning what they're doing is more than, more than two are meeting at, at one place at a time. That, that is not happening. That, that has never happened with this council, and don't ever believe it. We're having secret meetings, secret meetings in this building. And when, when you put that out online, you're basically saying that not only are you questioning the judgment of the council, but you also question the judgment of the staff, because the staff would be seeing what's going on here. And if, if they're letting the, the council have secret meetings or know they're going on, then we're all a bunch of dirty people. So, you know, that, that's not happening. You know, a liar, he, people like to call people a liar. They, you know, you're eating crow, he comes, he's embarrassing us with all the stuff that they're finding, brings religion into the fact that on the websites, we're talking about a Muslim, former Muslim person, former Muslim employee, former, there's a conspiracy here. It's always written right there, where we've got this conspiracy going. And I'll, I'll be quick to, there's hypocrisy, of course, and if you didn't know it, there's a 10-inch space at the bottom of the stairs down there that's that big that this whole building is just built wrong, because there's 10 inches of space down there that shouldn't be there. But what I really think we should be talking about is not all of the negatives, and I think we should be talking about the positives of the town. Let's face it, we're not going to have a tax increase this year. At least I don't think we are, are we?
That's up to you.
I, I can't, as far as I know, we're not. And we have the lowest tax rate of any town of our size in, in the United States of America. I mean, we're, we're fantastic. We've got the best police force in town, we've got the best of a lot of things, people care about our town. We're starting on a complete street out here that's going to make our town a much more beautiful place. We got the roundabouts and the roads, and we're very fortunate to have a town manager that's, that's probably going to handle one of our biggest needs that we have, is getting roads put into our town, or getting roads where we can, you know, travel again without all the traffic. The council's working hard, I think the staff is comfortable. One of the things that Jerry said, he's had one town manager, I think, I've been here for five, so. And I wouldn't, I wouldn't ju, yeah, I missed one a minute ago, but I- Yeah, I missed one a minute ago, but I thought back there. It's five. And, you know, and listen, they... All of them had good qualities. There's not one town manager that did not have certain qualities that weren't good or bad or what. They all had good qualities. But I've never seen a town manager that worked as hard as you do, Mr. Sadie. I've never seen a town manager that's here every Saturday and every Sunday and works with these guys. You choose to wear two hats, which is, you know, is the town engineer and the town manager. Don't need to say much about that. Saves the town money. But it's because you want to do it, you know? It's... You're doing a good job. We've got a great staff. We've got the VFW memorial coming up. And all of these positives create a conflict when people are constantly looking for the wrong and constantly looking for the bad in the town. You know, if some of these people would spend some of their time trying to do good, and I'm asking them, and they're going to listen to this, I'm asking them, "Come on over to our side." And when I say "our side," look, "Come on over to the side of wanting to help the town, wanting to get things going. I'd open my arms up for you and say, 'Come on, let's go. Let's make this a better town. Let's make it something that we all can be proud of instead of constantly find something that's wrong.'" But anyway, since I wasn't going to say anything, I think I probably said enough. And I appreciate everybody for coming out tonight. And remember the golf tournament on the 30th. And please call me if you know anybody that wants to play golf and wants to join in all the fun. Let me know. Thank you.
Mary Alvarez.
First, I'd like to give a shout out to Turning Point for coming here. It's a really great organization here in Union County that provides a priceless place for those suffering from unspeakable crimes against them. Please, if you don't know about them, do some research on them. They'd be... Any one of our children could have a need down the road when we're not around to... Or we're long gone, or they're children's children. The past two weeks, we've been planting trees. Well, the staff's been planting trees, and I've been taking credit for it. If you've never been part of the Arbor Week and the Tree Initiative going out to the schools, their faces light up. The schools look forward to it. If you've ever gone around our schoolyards in Union County, it's pretty much solid rock. And planting the trees that we have around our schools has softened the grounds, has made it prettier, better for the environment. And they look forward to us coming back every year. To date, since I first started this seven years ago, we're approaching 7,000 trees planted in Indian Trail, which is a credit to our staff, our schools, mostly our children for caring because they're the ones out there planting the trees. I'm proud of them. It's fun. And most of all, I mean, more so proud of them, the staff that goes out to be part of it. Mr. Bill, our county arborist, comes every year. Nobody knows more about trees than him. Hayden, Hayden's unbelievable, being out last week with the birth of his child and then rushing back to finish this program. We have a great staff. This is a great program. I hope it continues for many years. And most of all, it's helping the environment and teaching our next generation to be respectful to our environment. Patrick, thank you for continuing the program. I take off these two weeks to be part of this. It's inspiring, and I appreciate it. It was just a small idea I had, and the staff took it and ran with it. And I appreciate that. David, I'm looking forward to the golf tournament. I've got gift cards and stuff to give you and whatever else you need me to go out and get. It's our job, and the council's done a great job, to protect our employees. Somebody wants to go after someone, come after us, which, you know, it's been a few weeks since I've been on the cover of one of their websites. So I'm smiling. You can take my picture. I'm looking forward to see this little squirrel on it again. I've run into several town employees out at various stores that live here in town and comment, "How you doing? Is everything okay?" And the first thing out of their mouth is, "We love Patrick." To come up here and continue with the same nitpicking from articles and things you found is what is wrong with this country. Picking and choosing what you want to put to give people an opportunity to try and rally behind you with the negative is what divides us. And this is what people like that thrive on. I would love to say I just don't pay any attention to it. But I believe the people, or the three or four people that actually go and read this stuff, actually get comic relief from it. Popcorn sales go up. So stay away from the town employees and the staff. That's crossing a line. That is uncalled for. That is unethical. From a person that claims to be the most ethical person that's ever walked on the ground of Indian Trail, you're being the most unethical person any of us can meet. There's three sides to every coin. The left, the right, and the truth. For once, come up here and tell the truth when you're bringing up an article. Stay out of people's personal lives. That's crossing an even further line. If it's a performance issue, contact the town clerk or a council member. But going into people's personal lives and digging up the one thing that they made the news for or accidentally walking through the supermarket and a child ran down the lane and you ran down their foot, and for the next 10 years, remember when they ran over that child's foot in Publix? You need to fire them. That's all you'll ever hear. I make new mistakes every day. When looking at a mistake someone makes or anything, and not saying anything Patrick's ever done is a mistake, I don't even want to hear about it. It's your intention when you make the mistake. Were you intentionally out to hurt someone? And what did you learn from it? Your mistakes in life are your first, second, third, fourth, fifth, sixth, and every step towards success. So continue to make your mistakes. Just learn from them. Patrick, I wouldn't trade you for anything. You're a straight shooter. You'll be the first to tell me when I'm being a putz, and I appreciate that. You do an outstanding job. The staff adores you. Council, you're doing a great job. You come to these meetings. They're professional. You honor the positions you hold. And the people that have fought for this country, for your right to run for that office, keep doing what you're doing. And remember, Saturday's the Earth Day celebration. We have a great festival coming up. Lots of students receiving awards. Come on out. And I'm getting off my bully pulpit because if you want to see my picture, it'll be up on one of those websites tomorrow and probably for the next week. David, I'm going to give you a break for a bit.
Thank you. Keep talking, man.
It's just, it's going after a good person... No. Going after one of our staff, no. And Kathy, thanks for all the help with everything, for all these presentations. It's not easy putting these presentations together. Here's the lady that does it. And I'm always throwing something at her. Thank you. I appreciate you. And everybody else, God bless you. Have a safe week. Thank you for coming. Come again. Any one of us is always available for you, except when my voicemail's full. Sorry about that, David.
No problem. And Karen, before I get called a liar and get put on there, I mean, I've been here with four town managers, not five. I had to go back and think.
Thank you for correcting your testimony, sir.
And one quick thing for the vote that Shirley took. That's part of our record, please. Make sure that's part of minutes. Okay. Go ahead. Thank you.
Mr. McIntyre.
Thank you. Maybe I should just say a few short things because I think these guys have covered all the ground, right? For those of you who may not necessarily know me, you could probably tell that I have an accent. I'm actually from the mountains in North Carolina, and that's the way we speak. But having said that, growing up on the islands, you know, my grandfather was a farmer. He was very big into agriculture. But he also taught me a lot of things. And one of the things I can remember him saying is that... Well, there's two things I'll mention. The first thing is, work is never degrading as long as it's honest work. And the second thing he said is, empty barrels make the most noise, right? When they're empty, you hear a lot of noise from them. Doesn't mean that they're not worth a thing, but make a lot of noise. It's very unfortunate that in this country, where a lot of men and women who fought in the military to protect our freedom, given us the rights to run for election, to protest outside, whatever we may choose to do within reason, you would attack somebody based on their religion. That crosses a line for me. I don't care what religion you are, as long as you want to serve your God in any way that you feel is, you know, the way that you want to do it, that's it. Once you cross that line and you attack somebody's religion, then therefore, basically, I ignore you. And the reason I do is because you're not worth it. I've been on council even shorter than everybody up here. This is my first experience working with a town manager. So I'm going to judge him by the experience that I have. Every time I've called or I've asked a question, he's never been rude. He's never been unkind. He's always listened. He's always answered my questions, right? And I know that he's putting the town first. So Patrick, you also have my full support, right? I enjoy working with you. I like what you're doing for the town. And I think we all appreciate that. We're public persons, meaning that we have to be out in the public. And the public will sometimes say things to us that we may not necessarily like. But I'm a very big boy. I can take it. They don't have... So if they come to you, just send them to me. Just say, "Talk to Councilman McIntyre. He has an accent, you know? He'll be fine." But just keep doing what you're doing because we appreciate it, and I think you're doing a good job. Town staff, I know, is, from what I can tell, they're all happy with what's been going on. Council has been very supportive. Our job is to see what we can do to make your jobs easier, to provide the services for the town and the people. And that's it. I think we're very fortunate to have you with your knowledge of the roads, construction, things that you can point us out. I am not an engineer. I cannot tell you what should be built there. But you guys, you and your staff, can guide us and lead us to that, to make a good decision when some of these things come up. Council, I know that I do call on you sometimes to maybe ask you a question or to talk to David about basketball. On Sunday, by the way, I'm going to give him a little beating at home in basketball. But that being said, I appreciate you guys kind of guiding me as well, those of you with more experience than I have and kind of helping me see that way. To all the people who've come out tonight, thank you very much for coming out. We're here to serve you in any capacity that we can. We take this very seriously. And we enjoy it because it's us doing something to make our town better. Drive safe tonight, and thank you.
Mr. Head.
All right. I guess save the best for last. First of all, Mr. Cleon, thank you. We appreciate what you've done for us. You've set an example for everybody in this town. You know, when you see a problem, you know, you don't just talk about it, you act on it. And thank you very much. You know, I have tried to counsel some of these people about what's been going on by saying, you know, when somebody has to go back to 2014, 2015, 2016 to pull up, pardon my French, this crap, it tells me a lot. It tells me that this council is doing exactly what we ran to do, that we are very cohesive. We're in it for all the right reasons. So, you know, I can state that I have finally made the big time on several of these websites or whatever you want to call them. Bring it. Bring it. Because the more you're bringing it, it tells me we're doing the right thing. That's just it. A little bit about this man to my left. I've probably spent, I don't know that I've spent more time, but I've spent more time than my wife wanted me to spend over here, I can tell you that, to learn. And there's no better person to teach me what I need to know than Patrick. He's here. I come in on Saturdays. I've been in on Sundays. I've been in at night. I've been with him at nine o'clock at night. He does whatever it takes to make this town run correctly. And for that, I'm very appreciative. My orientation in getting up to speed continues. But without him, I wouldn't be to the point where I'm at right now. You know, it's sad. And I will be the first to say, I have been here. I have been here on Saturdays. I have watched these people. I've been to some of the meetings and watched what they do. It's their right. Forgive me. I normally don't talk a lot, but I'm going to have a couple of things to say here. The private, the secret meetings, I know exactly when that took place. Because I made a joke of it, and quite frankly, I mean, it's what we were doing. We started doing developer meetings some time ago before we ever started doing them here. And what we would do, there would be two of us come in, talk to the developers. We would leave, and two more would come in, along with Patrick, and then the developer. So this one time, we were really going to make sure that we weren't showing any... We weren't in a secret meeting, in that we, again, as good... Because we are very interested in what we're doing, we've taken longer on some of these meetings. And quite frankly, what happened was, I walked into an art exhibit. And there was Jerry and the former council member, Monty. And there was the Falcon Berries. I walked in and didn't even know that there was an art show going on, but decided, "Hey, I want to go see what local artists do." And walked in, and I saw the Falcon Berries. And I saw Jerry and Monty behind them. And I immediately backed out and made a comment to Michael, said, "Look, we're not doing anything. I'm walking out." So we got written up for that. I guess we get demerits for that. I don't know. But, you know, it's time to put this to a stop. As everyone has told you, this council is working together, exactly what we said we would do. And I think that's the other thing that's irritating to some of these people is that we do get along. We are getting things done. And so when you have to go out and, again, look at the past and look at, okay, I'm a puppet, you know? I'm honored to be in a picture with David and Shirley. You know, I was in a picture with something derogatory to say, but hey, I love the picture. So again, I'm usually one to kind of stay out of the fray. But when you try to belittle a person because of their religion, because of his work ethic, you've crossed the line. You've crossed the line with me. So Patrick, thank you for all you've done. We spent quite a bit of time together. And I appreciate what you've done. Everybody, staff, thank you, as always. Cheryl, appreciate you coming on board. Everyone have a good night. And I appreciate you listening to my tirade. Thank you.
Well, I was only recently portrayed as the green slime monster from Ghostbusters, shoving my face full of hamburgers. I'd love to know what that one meant. My daughter said it looked like me. At this time... Yes, go ahead, councilman.
I just want to add one thing. Friday night, I actually strolled over to Chestnut Square Park. Is that right? No. The Little Park. Crossing paths.
We were the ones that gave them all C names. They all run together.
But a big shout out to the staff, Hayden and Adam. I mean, that was a great event. There was a heck of a good concert. They're going to be doing these fourth, first Fridays, is that right? Fourth Fridays?
Movies are fourth Fridays and concerts are third Thursdays.
Third Thursdays, okay. That was a fabulous show that those guys put on. The weatherman messed up, though. It got cold right there at the intermission. But I just want to, you know, I know I...
But I just want to, you know, I know I've been one of the biggest critics about the parks. But to see all the folks that came out there and even was standing there, witnessed a couple of business deals that were taking place here at Indian Trail. Four people had met each other, exchanged contact information, and there's some things rolling. But just a big shout out, that was a great event and looking forward to the next one.
Well, that brings us to a closed session. In accordance with NCGS 143, 3181183, to protect attorney-client privilege. Does not look like it's a long one. So, I need a motion to go to closed session. Mr. Cohen's made a motion, all in favor. That'd be unanimous. Five minutes in the, I need a motion to come out of closed session. Mr. Morse has made the motion, all in favor.
Favor? Mr. Cohen?
Just raise your hand. I need a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Mr. McIntyre's made the motion to adjourn, all in favor. Needing adjourn.
Thank you.